As a preliminary matter, this is Woody Knight, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Tonight's meeting is a rescheduled meeting following a mistake with a meeting posting for the regular scheduled meeting of Wednesday, November 20. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Pete Pecos?
Yes, sir.
Larry Murphy?
Present.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Scott Kenter? I don't see Scott, but he may be joining us shortly. And Steve Manchin?
You're here.
Very good. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kristen Grubbs, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Daniel LaRoe?
Yeah.
Assistant Planner. Very good. Anticipated speakers? Okay, Scott, now, very good. Hi, Scott. Anticipated speakers, presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Damon Jusperson from Whipple Tree Works Corporation.
Here.
Hi, Damon. Okay, introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. November 25th. Open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Act 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law 38 20 until March 31st, 2025. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056. And the passcode is 108790. Or by calling 1-929-2056099US and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. The Zoom meeting. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel 9 on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org. And the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting business ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I'll introduce each speaker to on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or emotions. For all attendees, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer, mute button, or phone star six to, and that's how you mute and unmute when you are not speaking. After board members have spoken, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions while the public hearing is open. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand button in the order in which the people click on the raised hand button. Click on the raised hand button. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So let's get out of the way. Now I'll turn to the first item on the agenda. Meeting minutes. We have here approval of the November 6, 2024 meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from November 6 meeting?
No. I haven't.
Mary hasn't. Everyone else on the board had the opportunity?
Yeah, I have.
Some nods. Okay. Other edits or modifications to the minutes? Does anyone have any edits or modifications to the November 6 minutes? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as drafted and amended.
I'll both approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. And Steve, how do you feel?
Muting. No problem. I had to unmute. Sorry for the delay.
Yep, no worries. So that's the meeting minutes. Next item on the agenda. Liaison reports. We'll start first with Larry with the ZBA.
Thanks, Woody. I attended their regular monthly meeting last Thursday. A number of items on the agenda, but one in particular we may see. It's actually a petition for a variance to redraw the lot lines between 11 and 15 Sunset Drive. Did get quite a bit of pushback from the neighbors. If the variance is approved, then it'll have to come before us for an A and R plan. And then it has to go back to the, assuming that everything's in order. It would actually have to go back to the ZBA to take a look at the, I should have said it was to facilitate the construction of a new home on that on number 15. And they'll have to then make the required findings under the PIOD for that. So it's a rather complicated process and we, as I said, we may well see it as an A and R plan. But that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Conservation Commission. They met last week. Fortunately, I had trouble logging in, but I got in still 15 minutes late. I don't recall anything on the agenda other than on their agenda other than the 170 Orchard Street and they, there was some discussion and they're going to take up the matter at the next meeting. Other than that, it was business as usual and nothing that pained to us that I recall. Next item is MBPC, and that would be Kristen.
Thanks, Woody. So last week was the MBPC Commissioners' meeting. There was sort of two parts. One was a presentation and the other was regular program updates. So the presentation was from Megan O'Neill, who's the Executive Director of the North Shore Habitat for Humanity Organization. She was essentially taking the opportunity to talk to all the towns in the Merrimack Valley region. So the North Shore chapter of Habitat includes Merrimack Valley and the southern part of the North Shore, so into the MAPC region. But she hadn't come to MBPC in a while, so was updating everybody on what their program is, what they do, where their projects are, how she loves to partner with towns, with communities on town on land. She gave a few examples of different projects throughout the region that are happening. It's pretty compelling work in addition to building affordable homes. So their model is home ownership. In contrast to a lot of other organizations that do affordable housing rentals, they really focus on home ownership and on finding families and individuals who need homes and they provide sweat equity into actually constructing their own home. So their average home price that they build ends up being a value of $245,000. Their target residents for these homes are families with a 60% area median income, which is in the range of $65,000 to $98,000. And the other cool thing, just not everyone, this was a reminder to me, I'm not sure everybody knows, but they also provide funding for no interest loans and even grants for rehab work. So they provide funds in the neighborhood of $3,000 to $25,000 to help with critical home repairs. They do a lot of aging in place upgrades for elderly. It's a really impactful way to use a small amount of money to make a real difference for people. So that was a great presentation. The housing program update was talking about MBTA and how many communities are working on passing their multifamily MBTA communities bylaw this fall. There've been a lot of town meetings. 102 cities and towns in Massachusetts have passed their zoning this year. So that's pretty awesome. They're definitely, you know, I feel like we hear a lot about the ones that don't pass it, but pretty awesome that 100, more than 100, including Newberry and all of you. Rowley's Town Meeting is tonight, by the way. So that'll be interesting to see how they do with trying to pass their MBTA zoning. And then the MBPC Planners' Meeting is tomorrow. And staying on the theme of housing tonight, they have invited staff from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities from the State EEA Department of Housing to come speak to all the regional planners about the Affordable Homes Act and the accessory dwelling unit provision that requires communities to zone for allowing accessible dwelling units by right. So that'll be, you know, it's just an hour meeting, but it'll be an opportunity to have direct Q and A with the state staff about that. So Daniel and I will be attending that and we'll be bringing feedback from that meeting to the next planning board meeting. Let's see, we got two minutes. Should I keep talking, Woody?
If you have other things coming on with the MBPC, please.
They, yeah, I guess a couple other things I mentioned. They have a new director of their environmental program, Adrian Lennon. She's great. I know her through the Eight Towns and the Great Marsh Program. She's been a city councillor in Amesbury, on the Open Space Committee, has a great professional background for the work. And so I have a meeting with her coming up to explore using local technical assistance funds to help with Newberry's Open Space and Rec Plan update, which is a project that the newly formed Open Space Committee in Newberry is working on. I may have mentioned previously, we applied for a grant to fund some contracted support work for the Open Space Plan update. But unfortunately, that was unsuccessful from the Community One Stop Program. But we're sort of pivoted and are finding new ways to get that project going again in this fiscal year. So I'll keep you all posted on that.
Yeah, thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, Kristen.
You're welcome.
I have a time of 7:15, so we'll start our public hearing. Tonight's meeting is a continuance from November 6, 2024. Public hearing for Whipple Tree Works. Level 2 site plan review for a nonprofit educational organization use of the barn as one, excuse me, at one marshmallow. The Planning Board's public hearing originally scheduled for November 20, 2024 was rescheduled to tonight. November 25, 2024 at 7:15, following a written request from the applicant. Hello, Damon.
Good evening.
Damon's here. We're set to go. Kristen, do we have any new public comments submitted in writing as of 11:25?
No, we have not received any public comments since the last discussion.
Any of the Planning Board members? Have new comments? This time? Okay. Excuse me. Do any of the members of the public have any comments, any new comments at this time? Damon, do you have your hand raised?
Yes.
Okay.
In reviewing the Order of Conditions, one of my board members pointed out that it is we are shut down in this Order of Conditions from November 15 till March 15. And that seems a bit extreme. We will not conduct a lot of business during that time. But in the past, we've had a winter craft fair during that time. We may wish to do a winter walk in the woods. And so I think it is going a bit too far to say we cannot do any activities during that time period. I think a condition that prohibited parking behind the barn if there was snow and requiring adequate access for fire is within the keepings of the nature of what this Order of Condition should be about, which is the safety, not prohibiting us from being able to carry on business. So I would like to see that amended.
Okay. Kristen, can you pull sheen's share screen that so the board members can see where he's talking about in the, on the decision?
Part E, months of operation on page 7.
Yep, I'll pull it up. Can you see that?
Yes.
No, it's good.
So just to remind, you know, everybody listening, the board, we shared the screen with a draft decision at the last meeting. We went through paragraph by paragraph, section by section. Essentially, the board at that time was comfortable with the language and requested that the decision get reviewed by Town Council, which we did. And the change. So I also have a red line draft, which I'm happy to pull up if that's helpful. And maybe it will be, but the modification that Damon's mentioning was a recommendation from Town Council, which was originally the language essentially said classes and events will not be held during the winter season. I think was the previous language and the additional language was intended to clarify what that actually means. And this is what Damon was referencing, was putting actual dates around the parameters of the activities. And I, you know, I appreciate you bringing it up, Damon. I think this was coming from previous discussions during earlier hearings over the discussion that because the barn is not insulated and because of the questions around snow storage and access in the wintertime that have been raised, this was a way to address that and say in the case that you would want to be operating during the winter, there would be additional concerns that would require discussion related to the parking and the snow storage.
Yes, and I fully understand that why this came about. And it was only when it was defined this way that I, it it made me realize it was in conflict with other things. We principally will not be in operation, but to say that we cannot be in operation is going too far. I'm happy to have restrictions saying that we have to check with the fire chief before any winter event to make sure that access is still maintained. But I think to say we cannot have any operations for that extended period of time is too restrictive.
Okay, but I agree with you there, Damon. Does anyone from the board have questions? I'll go down through Pete's recues. Larry, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Damon, I was definitely under the impression that you didn't intend any winter events out there. Let me ask you, that rock boundary wall around the driveway, has that been removed? I think that was the only concern was the snow storage that might be inhibited by that wall.
It has not, as of this moment, been removed. And if that wants to be the Order of Condition so that there is more room to push snow, we will take it away. As I said, I think in the previous meeting, or maybe it was just a discussion with Kristen, that wall was built after the renovation. It's not a historic wall. And so it going away is not a hardship for anyone.
Yeah, that's my understanding. It's just a boundary wall. Or it is to market. If my memory is correct, that was the only objection that came from the Fire Department that during the winter, there wouldn't be sufficient room to store the snow and get a fire truck around there. So I mean, I'm certainly open to amending the language. But I think it would have to be conditioned upon the removal of that, those stones.
Well, could we amend the language? Let's say, I mean, winter is, I think it's December 21 through, is it March 21? Each year on or around, plus the stone wall? Damon, would that be acceptable to you?
I'd prefer not to limit it because we could do things like go for a winter trail walk and then we would be prohibited from using the space or even having a meeting in it as I read this. So I'd rather make the safe, the space safe and remove the winter restriction with the understanding that we're not going to be out there very much because it's not, you know, it would be single events. You know, you can't sit there for a class. But if we wanted to have a workday or another event that either starts there and goes into the woods or is a special event like the craft fair, I just don't see the being closed. The Order of Conditions is supposed to make sure that we're safe and respectful of our neighbors. And I don't, this seems like it just goes too far into inhibiting our ability to operate. Whether we do any operations is is secondary.
Right. You have no heat, right?
Correct.
So if you were to do anything more than, let's say, in February, a 15-degree day, more than 20 minutes in that building, you would need probably some temporary heat, right?
Or to dress very warm, like when we're working on the farm.
Or go home for a hike.
Yeah.
Hold on one minute, if you would, please, Scott. Larry, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just one point. I noticed the Town Council suggested that it be referenced in the decision that I missed one meeting, but, you know, filed the required Mullen certificate, which is fine. In that light, I wonder if it also shouldn't reflect that Pete has recused himself because he's a director of butter.
Okay. That is in, what section is that in, please, Larry?
I think it's in the opening.
Statement.
I'm just looking at the, I think it's in the very beginning, isn't it? I mean, it hadn't occurred to me that this type of thing needed to be reflected. But if my missing one meeting needs to be reflected in the decision, I think probably Pete's recues ought to be reflected as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I I was not familiar that that needed to be included. And I haven't had, these comments came in on Thursday. I haven't had a chance to have a conversation with Town Council yet, but I, I think your point is a good one, Larry, and I'll check on that. There's certainly this section of the procedural history that where it would be easy enough to just lay that out in terms of how the public hearing proceeded.
Okay, do we want to amend that now or note it for review? What's, Kristen, what's the best thing?
Um, I if someone wants to suggest language, I'm happy to edit it now, or we can just note that 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 will be added
Okay.
with the appropriate language as reviewed by Town Council.
Very good. If we can go back to E. Does Larry, that's it for you for comments?
Yeah, I mean, my only concern about it, I mean, when we originally started looking at this, I was anticipating a 12-month operation, frankly. And then I, maybe I heard things differently, but I thought I heard from Damon that they weren't planning to have any winter activity. So, you know, it wasn't a concern. Yeah, my only concern about it is just make sure we have appropriate language in there to comply with the Fire Department's recommendation. That's all. If somebody wants to go out there in 15-degree temperature, God bless them.
Certainly anything we communicate to people, they would know what they're getting themselves into.
Is is that something we want to amend now, Kristen? Is it, Larry, do you have any thoughts on language for that?
Well, let's see. I suppose we ought to have Town Council review it, but let's see. Barn on the property is currently three-season space as such, Whipple Tree, per federal fence, shall not be held on the property during the winter season defined as unless and until the Fire Department's recommendation for removal of the stone wall boundary is met. That sound all right?
That is fine with me. Thank you very much for entertaining my concerns.
Yep, no problem, Damon.
Yeah, I think you want it on the other side of the definition of winter.
Woody, I have a question, if I may?
Yes. Go ahead, Steve.
Sure, I get how there might be an event in the barn, you know, throughout the year. But when Damon mentioned, you know, a nature walk, to me, that sounded like an event that isn't at the barn. And I thought the focus on this special, this permit, if you will, was for activities to be held in the barn and not, you know, over the river and through the woods for a nature walk in December. So I'm wondering whether So I'm wondering whether. Damon's use of the words of a nature walk go beyond uh. The scope that we were talking about for the use of the barn.
Well. My. My look at what you just said and. The situation here is. They need a place to park and we're here for parking review. And if Damon liked to reply to that, please go ahead.
Yes, that's how I read it. It when I got to look at it a little more in depth and other members of the board did as well is that. No operations will take place, meaning whiffle tree can't function, can't work. During these time periods, so it seemed like a. So. And we do. Need to park somewhere if we're going to bring people onto the property. For a walk on the property, so that's why I was asking for a modification because it felt like it just felt. Uh. Very restrictive.
No, I I think you're reading it correctly. I Kristen, I make it regarding removal of the stone wall boundary is met. Is is.
Yes, I don't. We can just end it there. I think your. Language is good.
Mary, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay. So. We've amended the. And you were done with questions, Steve? That was your only question?
Right, uh, again, my s. Reading of this proposal is it's going to be barn centric and not. Again, I'm using the word nature walk because that's the term that I. Think Damon use.
Well. Yes, but we'd also had the craft fair within the timeframe. You know, it was in December. Three years ago and we held it. So that would be in violation of. The order.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, maybe I'm not being as clear as I'd like to be, but uh, yeah, I've. The idea of the craft fair in December or January. Seems good to me, but that's obviously something associated with. The barn in case it's raining in December. So I'm not trying to shut down or suggest shutting down all activities. Or rather just make sure they're barn centric.
I think I. Um. If this helps clarify what I think you're saying, Steve, um, and if. It doesn't, my apologies, but. I, you know. Damon. On behalf of Whiffle Tree will have to. Address. Permission and. Lease with. The other owners of property. This decision, this site plan review decision is barn centric. That's what we're concerned about. So if Whiffle Tree as an organization walks on a public property or a private property. It will be Whiffle Tree's responsibility to assure that their activities can proceed on. That other property. What we are concerned with here is the barn parcel. Activities.
And the parking. So.
Yes.
Okay. Um. That being said. Is there, does anyone from the public or from the board have any comments at this time? Any further comments or new comments? We have a raised hand. I don't know who it is.
Helen Matosio.
Go ahead, Ellen.
I guess just a comment about what was just discussed is that um, you know, again. The broken record that I am where the project just lacks specifics. I mean, now we're talking about specifics and now we're talking nation. You know, he knows that we're going to maybe do nature walks in the winter time and in terms of like safety, how? How do you take that into consideration where, again, depending on the conditions at the time? If there's snow, no snow, and where are people walking? So I guess, you know, where's is safety just really bound to these forty one spaces? Or, you know, I mean, are we are you just if you're allowing, you know, the activities? And you're talking about safety in terms of allowing activities and allowing, you know, adding the parking. How does where's where's that line drawn? Maybe it's maybe it is no, maybe it doesn't um relate to it at all. It's, you know, again, it's. It just to me, it's it's again, like I said, we just. It's just off the cuff, but it just we're just talking about um because there's no plan, this business, true business plan. We're just talking about. Random events which maybe not happen or you know how they'll happen. So that's why I just kind of so how do you? How how are we talking about safety in terms of a nature walk when? What does that mean and where are you walking and you know, where are you using those forty one spaces and? If there's snow and is now does marsh metal become too narrow for cars be parked on marsh metal lane and et cetera, et cetera. So that's where. Um. That's just, you know, just just a general comment about. The process. And activities and lack thereof specifics.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen. That's something you want to address, Damon? Go ahead, otherwise I'll continue.
I I I'd like to just make a quick comment, which is none of those um. I think what. The four corners of what the planning board is doing is site plan review for this particular. Parcel of land, so none of none, no safety concern, insurance, lease agreements, activities. None of the, you know, regular. Safety issues on any road on a snowy day. None of that. Is not true that it's important, um, but it's. Um, it's important outside of what is being looked at here in this particular bylaws, site plan review provisions.
Um, no other comments from anyone public or board or Damon?
Um, I don't know how you guys proceed if you have to vote on that amendment and then move on to any other questions or. If we would just move through. So I do have a a question on F. Around food preparation, um, but I don't know if you need to finish. If you have to finish this one first and then we would move on to other things.
I believe we can move on. Um, we've we amended it, we've amended it on there.
Okay.
We now highlight it, so on F. Go right ahead, Damon.
Um. So in F, there's. A. Uh, it says. Um, what is it exactly? Offering. The proposed use does not include offering food or alcohol nor such use permitted under this approval. Um, what I wanted to check is. You know, we would not be. Offering food in and of ourselves, but does that permit? Stop us from having a food vendor who has goes before the health board and. Does those sorts of things. I don't understand how the language actually. Is meant to apply to. The business. I know we can't. We're not a food vendor. We can't sell food. We're not planning to sell food. Um. Or prepare food necessarily for sale on site, but. I'm just confused about how that is. How I'm supposed to read and interpret that? Um, you know. Some people sell. Candy bars at events, things like that is as part of fundraising. You know, I don't understand what. Exactly that's intended to say or restrict or mean. Um, you know, if we did a class on how to can. Dill beans. Is that providing food? I, you know. That language wasn't clear in its intention to me. Anytime you serve alcohol, you need a a permit from the select board, so like. So I just wasn't sure what that was aiming at and what it meant.
Well, I think the intention is. To say what. You are saying, which is there are other things you will need to serve food and alcohol, and this approval is not. Uh, giving you permission for that. That's how I read it.
Yeah, does it limit to? You know, if we. You know, like I said. If there is a music recital. Often people. At the intermission sell snacks. Would this be prohibitive of that? Whether they're prepared snacks, not cooked on site. You know, that's that's why I'm asking because it to me it doesn't. Again, it seems. Uh. A little overreaching because there's a lot of restrictions already in the health board about how you can serve food, when you can prepare food, all of those things that we have to abide by. I don't see why it's here.
Can I respond to that, Woody?
Yes, I was just gonna ask Larry.
Yeah. And first of all, Damon, I I would be reluctant to modify this language at all because it was specifically put in there by town council. I'll tell you my interpretation. And similar to what Kristen said, it's the same as what Kristen said. This is just saying that this document is not a food service permit. And I think that I I don't read it as saying you can never have food on site.
Okay.
It I read it as saying that you you can't hold up this document and say. We're allowed to have food on site. Now, that's just one man's opinion. You might want to have your attorney review it and see if if she agrees.
You know, that's way too expensive.
Okay. But again, it's just what just one person's opinion.
Uh, I trust your guys' judgment on it. It just. Again, it sparked a little alarm about. What was intended and what was. Meant by it, but if that's. The understanding. Of of what it is saying, then I think we should just proceed. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have anything else to give Mark Damon?
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And unless someone else has anything, I'll proceed. Okay, seeing that there's no more public or. Comments or comments from the board. Um, I'd accept a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Hey, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Scott?
You muted, Scott.
Muted, Scott.
Uh, Steve, how do you feel?
No problem.
And I vote yes as well. So now. Now the public hearing is closed. We've you've all had. Time to review the public decision. Um, Larry, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Because of the amendments that we've made here, um. How in your opinion? How should we proceed with the decision? Do they need to?
I uh again, it's just one person's opinion, but I think we could simply move to. And I'm prepared to move to approve the decision as amended.
Okay. That was a motion.
Agreed, that makes sense.
Is that a motion, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. For approval of. The decision as amended. Roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Steve, how do you feel?
No problem.
Okay. Great, so. That's. That being approved, uh Damon, I wish you luck with everything.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Yep. Okay, and the public hearings, we have no other public hearings soon. Um. Next order of business, that's new business. Um, this is notice of intent to sell land, you know, one seventy Orchard Street. Pursuant to MGL. Chapter sixty one A, section fourteen. Playing work, the planning board received a copy. Of the notice from the estate of Lewis Bulgares. Of the intent to sell the real estate at one seventy Orchard Street. The notice explains that the. Property is twenty point five seven acres. Not. And that a portion of the land. Is proposed to be used. For four. Single family homes. And the balance of the land thirteen point seven three four acres. Is to be conveyed. Caved. For the purposes of continued agricultural use and land conservation. Pursue. Pursuant to MGL Master in Law, chapter sixty one A, section fourteen. The town holds a right, the first refusal. For the property. Boards and committees, including the planning board. May choose to make a recommendation to the select. Board. Regarding the exercise of the right of first refusal. So due to the fact that. The subdivision plan. That we have a subdivision plan here. As previously approved by this planning board. Results in uh four housing units and the preservation of. Currently uh farmed agricultural land. Um. My recommendation. For the select board would be to. Um. To take. No action on the first right and refuel. Um. Does anyone have any comments on this? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion that we uh. Recommend to the select board that. The. Due to the fact that we had, we had a site plan review here. That uh they. Exercise uh. The. To pass up on um. Ex exercising the right to. Um. To purchase this, I'm sorry, I'm I'm stumbling here. Um, to purchase this land and to let let it out sixteen. I hope I said that right.
I I I agree with you, Woody, uh. I'd so I'd move we recommend to the select board to waive the right of first refusal.
I'd be happy to second that.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Steve, how do you feel?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So Kristen could. And uh let with the uh select board know that. About the results of that. And. On moving on on the agenda, the only other thing I have. And correct me if I'm wrong, is uh plan is directors. Planning directors report. Now go to Kristen.
Right. How much time do I have? I'm just kidding. Um. Um, let's see, a couple additional updates, um, following. A few that I started at the MBPC um liaison report earlier. Um. On Friday, I attended, uh, I represented the town in Newbury at a Green Communities. Um statewide summit, um, I think you all recall, but Green Communities is. A state. Designation program where a town commits to um reducing their energy use. Um, in order to be a partner in the state's goal of reducing um energy. By twenty fifty. So Newbury, with the support of the great staff at MBPC and a lot of work by Martha, um. Was uh admitted into that program, designated a green community last spring. And we um were honored at this um event. And there's a plaque and soon there will be some road signs that can be installed at the gateway roads into town. And there's a plaque, and soon there will be some road signs that can be installed at the gateway roads into town. Um, celebrating the fact that Newbury is a green community. So, um, so that was fun. And I will say part of, I mean, the main purpose of that program is that it opens the door to funding from the state to support. All sorts of projects, the first project for Newbury will be, um, uh, installing a new, uh. Component of the HVAC system at the Newbury Elementary School. My understanding is that, that the heating and cooling system there hasn't really been upgraded in over twenty years. So it'll bring a lot of, um, improvement in energy costs, both cost and, um, efficiency. And then from here on out, we're eligible for grant funding for. You can, you can get it for light bulbs in your town hall or streetlights, LED lights. You can replace windows on historic buildings with it, it really, it provides a regular source of revenue for the town to support all those kinds of projects. Let's see. Uh. Daniel and I had a short meeting with the developers of thirty-four Central Street, um, which as you all know is in the, um. Uh, new MBTA multifamily zoning bylaw, um. They're starting some site work on the property, doing topography surveys and some soil testing. And they are starting to, um, develop their proposal, which they think will be coming to the town within a month or so. It's looking like it'll be a mix of, um, one, two, and three bedroom. Units, um, which is really what Newbury needs. And so we're just looking forward to seeing that move forward, um, thanks to town meetings vote, um. To establish that multifamily district. So I'll keep you posted on that, um. We've made some great progress on the Caldwell Farm Trail, um. Part of the planning board's open space residential subdivision on the Caldwell Farm property on Elm Street. Um, included a conservation restriction on the open space and a publicly accessible trail. Um, so that is been laid out on the ground and, um, DPW will be. Clearing out the brush since we have a good window of time where the leaves are down and the snow hasn't fallen yet. And, um, the open space committee is going to be involved in helping, uh, sort of open that trail officially to the public. So just want to say it's, it's great, um, Daniel's been a real help in getting that finally going. And it's a good, um, sort of. Interdepartmental project with DPW and the conservation agent and planning and police to assure that, you know, the access will be safe. And it'll be a really great, um. Great trail, great new trail for the town. Um. We're starting to work, believe it or not, on FY twenty-six budget and goals, um. So I, um. I recall working on this in January last year, but the process has moved up a bit. And, um, there's actually a deadline this week for the first draft goals. So I'm going to be working with Woody and Daniel on that, um. And then I can bring some information to the rest of the planning board at our next meeting. Um, essentially, it's part of the annual reporting process where you summarize FY twenty-four accomplishments. Um. Update on FY twenty-five, we're halfway through FY twenty-five right now, what goals you set and how they're going. And then you set your goals for FY twenty-six, so I'd love input on that, um, for the planning department and at the next meeting. Or anytime, if anyone has any ideas of something you really want the planning board and the planning department to. Get to work on, just send them my way, because we're, you know. The time is now to, to, um, sort of develop those and flesh out what we feel is a reasonable work plan for the next year and a half. Um. I talked a little bit about the open space rec plan update, but just to. Just to say again, um, we were, you know, I was very disappointed, we didn't get the grant that we wrote last summer. Um, but I do think there are other ways to move that project forward, and that was, uh, um, priority of FY twenty-five. Um, so, um. Looking for more support for the open space committee if anyone's interested. And. I guess the last thing is just wanted to discuss, answer any questions anyone has about any of that. But just talk through the next meeting, um. Our regularly scheduled first Wednesday of the month meeting is December fourth. So that's. Nine days from now, um, next Wednesday. And I had floated whether, um, at the moment, we don't have any permitting. Uh, projects or work on that agenda, that draft agenda. So I'd like to focus it on more of the workshopping kinds of projects, so. We've invited, um. We'd like to talk about the housing production plan, which will be in a final draft form. Um, that's been a project that's been underway for more than a year now, but, um. Uh, it's finally in a form to finalize, and then the planning board would. Uh, consider making a recommendation to the select board to approve the housing production plan as a five-year plan. And then it would go off to the state per, um, review and approval as well. So I wanted to spend a little time at the next agenda on, um. Discussing that and reviewing that, um, and we've invited Ian Burns and, um. His staff to come to that meeting. So that's one agenda item, and then the other would be focusing on the zoning amendments that are in the works for annual town meeting in April. Um, so we'd invite our, our other guest star speaker being Martha Taylor. Um, to join us next week, and Daniel and I were thinking it would be fun to have that meeting in person, um, so I just wanted to. Discuss that with you all and see if that works. Um, we could either try to meet in the afternoon on Wednesday, the fourth. Any, any time between one o'clock and five o'clock seems to work for the people I've talked to so far. Or we could meet at seven at night in person, um, or. If in person doesn't work, we can talk about that.
Anyone have?
Well, I, I can do any of the above.
I can as well.
I have a little bit of a bump, I'll be driving, uh, to New Jersey on Wednesday, but I would be available at night remotely. If that was where we landed.
I'm fine with it, uh, pretty, thank you. I just don't like seven o'clock.
What do you prefer, Mary?
I'm sorry?
I said, what do you prefer?
Oh, um. Uh, one to four seems fine, in person, any time between then.
Okay.
Scott, how's it work for you?
Um, I'm not sure yet, uh, Woody, but, um, I'll do my very, very best to, uh. Uh, to make that. And Pete, you wouldn't be there in person in the afternoon, right?
I would not.
Okay. Um, yeah, I could, I could probably check in with, uh, Kristen tomorrow.
So, uh, Kristen, do you want to? Leave this as, as is for now and we'll discuss it tomorrow?
Um. We can, I, we need to post the agenda by Wednesday, um, and if we're going to. I mean, I honestly, I'd love to have you all there, that is my preference, um. I get that meeting scheduling is really tricky, um. But I do think for this kind of agenda in person would be great, um. So I feel mixed, um. This is the time that we've talked about with MBPC, since it's our regular, you know, meeting date anyway.
Well. If, uh, if we have no public hearings, we're not necessarily locked in for the fourth either, we do, do another day.
I, I can always plug in remotely too. It's better than listening to music.
Yeah, Chris, I just checked, um. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be out of town and, uh, in a meeting the afternoon of the fourth. Um, but I could do. Um, I could do remotely on the fourth that evening, or, um, I think as Pete just said, or Larry. Um, you know, another day, maybe even Thursday.
Is it, um, Woody, is it okay to do a remote, um, if you're not in Massachusetts? Just curious, I'm not saying you're doing that, Scott, I'm just curious.
It's fine.
Let's say I'm in Vermont and, uh, I dial in. It says clearly that it's got to be Massachusetts, right, Kristen?
Correct, it's, you can, if, if you're on Zoom, you're on Zoom, we're all just on our weird screen, it doesn't matter where you actually are.
Yeah.
When they first come out with remote participation, you had to state the reason, and one of the reasons was being out of state, so. Yeah, you can do it from anywhere.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, out of the community, I should say, but.
So it sounds like our options are. Regular time, regular place, meaning Wednesday night, December fourth at seven o'clock on Zoom. That's one option that sounds like could work for everybody. Um. Or. Find another time.
Another day for an in-person. Um, is Ian, Ian and Martha would be available at seven on Wednesday?
Um, yes, they both said they could do afternoon or evening on the fourth.
All right, well, I'll leave it up to the board. Does anyone? Want to seek another day and time to do an in-person meeting, or do we want to do? Seven o'clock on next Wednesday?
Fine, it's fine with me if it's on a regular day. Um, seven o'clock, because, uh. You know, getting, having the meetings all at the same time is easier than trying to split them up.
Well, so who would be participating remotely, uh, Pete and Scott?
If it was, uh, Wednesday evening.
Yeah, I mean, the rest of us could meet in person, because I, 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 I agree with your, your feeling, Kristen, for this type of meeting in person, if at all possible, would be. A good thing.
I, I, I agree, and, um, you know, I'd give it my best shot, um, I do have a, a Wednesday meeting in DC, but, um. Um, depending what time that, uh, that meeting ended, um, I could. You know, more than likely, there's a good shot I can get back by seven PM. In person.
Does that, um, Mary, how do you feel about in person at seven at night?
Fine.
Okay.
As long as it's not at my house.
I was gonna say, well, I'll come over.
Yeah.
So it sounds like seven o'clock next Wednesday, we'll set the agenda up and we can do a hybrid so Pete can participate.
Yeah, I, I think we'll be able to figure that out, right? Okay, yes. We will be able to figure that out.
All right, well, let us know.
Yeah, I think if it's in the evening, it sounded like it, um, Ian would also be remote, most likely. Um, but I'm sure Martha can be in person, so yeah, we'll just, we'll plan on seven o'clock on the fourth, um, hybrid.
Sounds good.
All right, great, thank you, everybody. That's all I have.
Hey, hey.
Send me ideas about FY twenty-six, begotten.
Kristen, could I ask you a question, Woody, if it's okay?
Oh, go right ahead.
Hey, how, how is our, uh, accessory dwelling, uh, by law dovetailing with the new kind of package that's rolling out?
Um, yeah, thank you for just asking that, because, um. I'll answer your question, and then I will say, or I will say first, we would like to spend time on that at, on December fourth as well. And, um, so part of the Martha zoning amendments, ADU, floodplain, um, bylaw update. And then the general recodification, those are the three categories that we'll dive into more next week. Um, in general, Pete, it's. We think we're in pretty good shape, there, we will be able to make modifications to what the town's current accessory. Um, structure bylaw is, um, which is currently, uh. A sort of more restricted version, that the state's new law mandates kind of opening up. Not just that it's by right, but that it can be detached or attached, um, that it's, uh. You know, can't be restricted in terms of, um, being rented for. Who did we lose? Somebody. Um, can't be restricted, it looks like we lost Woody. Um, in terms of being only rented or lived in by a family member of the primary dwelling. There's sort of a, a few places where the, it sort of opens up the provision. Um, but in general, I don't think it's, we don't think it's gonna be a big, um. A sort of. Controversial, I don't, well, who knows, but we'll discuss and review it and see if there are any components of it that people have questions about. It's fairly understandable, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, it's not a big change, it's not, it's more a modification than some. Some totally new idea.
Cool, because we currently do allow for non-family members, we do allow for income generating. For people that want to age at home, we do allow attached and detached. So that's, I was looking to see how, because I would think we would dovetail to any, to any configuration that might come down the road.
Yeah, I, it's.
Good.
It's looking good, you're right, there's not, there's not a huge amount changes.
Thank you.
Kristen, if I may repeat my, uh, question about how does it affect overlay districts, which abound throughout the Commonwealth? And certainly in Newbury.
Yeah, so, um. You still have to adhere to dimensional requirements and, um. Anything like the water supply protection or overlay district or, um, the Plum Island overlay district. Um, as far as town council is advising at this point, none of. None of the, you know, parameters around what's required by those overlays changes. So, to be specific, um, if. You currently on a lot in Plum Island are allowed to have three bedrooms. And your single-family dwelling unit already has three bedrooms, you would not be allowed to. Uh, build an ADU with additional bedrooms. That's, we're getting clear, you know, council on that from town council, um, that's. At the moment, what we're being advised.
Right, but again, my understanding is that the P A O D. Would not allow for a duplex to be built, period, you, you know, it's one residence, period. And. Would not allow for, uh. A separate dwelling unit. And we, also where I go with that is that I think that's the kind of thing we need to know. Not as an advisory opinion, but a certain, you know, binding opinion. Um, is an old school thought which I subscribe to, that says if you don't understand something that's coming before you to vote on. You vote no, because you can always bring it back. But don't say, well, we think it's gonna mean this, so I'm gonna vote yes. Um, my predilection, this is just a general philosophical statement, is to, uh, be prepared to vote no on something. That isn't crystal clear.
Well, I, I, I mean. Well, I, I, I mean, we will have a clear opinion from town council before we bring that modified language to town meetings. So I, I agree with you, that's, you know, that's, that's the work that the workshop and the planning board needs to do to develop the language that is legal, appropriate for the community of Newbury, clear, you know, and we'll need to do a lot of that work to communicate and answer questions and have, you know, public meetings if needed and public hearings in order to just have those discussions ahead of time, ahead of the vote.
So Kristen, I don't mean to throw like a real confusing wrench into this, but when Steve just said something, it triggered me, you know, we're not kind of a unique environment because we're coastal community and so people want to come to coastal communities. And so we're setting up the accessory dwelling unit with parameters that seem that are pretty loose. Are we opening up the can of worms for rental stuff?
Um, are you talking about short-term rentals or? Yeah, well, it's, it's part of the discussion for sure.
Does the state address that at all?
Um, we're waiting for the state to come out with regulations and guide, and a guidance document. And that's, I am guaranteed, we'll be talking about this tomorrow at MBPC's planners meeting. And hopefully we'll hear more information. At the moment, they haven't been telling any of the communities when they're coming out with that guidance document, but.
That could actually be a huge backfire to the whole concept of what they're trying to achieve. I mean, we know what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to achieve more dwelling units that are affordable, that are, you know, family, family, you know. But I can just see, wow. So there has to be some sort of buffer in there.
Yeah, I, maybe I'm not quite sure what you're saying, Pete. Which is why we need workshop. But you, you, communities can restrict them to not be used for short-term rentals. That's up to each community. It's my understanding.
Well, of course, the real estate community, or should I say the investor community would certainly fight tooth and nail, I'm sure, to be able to maximize a potential rate of return by being allowed to add units and then do short-term rentals. Certainly that's what we're seeing out here in Plum Island. So it's not an abstract concern. It is a reality already.
Got it, Steve.
Yeah.
Poor Woody, I believe, is trying to log on through his phone. Are we, did we get you, Woody?
I'm back on my phone. I keep getting kicked out and I don't have a Wi-Fi signal, so that's where I'm at. I'm in a bad cell service area where I am and I don't have Wi-Fi.
Well, we're
You can hear me, Kristen.
We're beginning our discussion of what we'll be spending more time discussing next week. So, so we can update you. Pete, do you want to take the reins as vice chair?
Um, is there anything else on the agenda we need to talk about? Okay, that being the case and only because, Woody, are you back? I was going to all right, I was gonna see if there's anything else in the agenda. There isn't. So I was going to suggest we conclude this meeting and call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All righty, I see no discussion prevailing. Larry, how do you feel, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Mary?
Yes, indeed.
All right, Scott?
Yes.
And Woody, are you in there, buddy?
I am, I am for the moment. Thank you, Pete.
All right, good. And I would say we can adjourn and Steve, you feel the same way, right?
Yes, indeed.
All right, everyone, thanks so much and sorry for the, for the bumps with technology. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.